Councilmember Sperry.
President.
Councilmember Curtis.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness.
Here.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilor Januski.
Here.
Councilor Herbig.
Here.
If you'll stand and join me, please, for this little flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and consider it a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. There's no approval of the agenda, but if there's no objection, the agenda will stand approved as written. First item on the agenda, the only item on our agenda, is Resolution Number Seventeen dash two ninety-two, a resolution reaffirming that the city of Kenmore is a safe, inclusive, and welcoming place for all people. Is there a motion? No, I'm not going to read the whole.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Sperry.
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Councilwoman Januski.
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig.
Yes.
Resolution Number Seventeen dash two ninety-two stands approved unanimously. Okay, now, called to order the joint meeting with the school board. So first item on the agenda is school impact fees. Who's going to take that?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I actually haven't had a chance to meet everyone. Could we maybe even just do a really...
Absolutely.
I don't know, say our name and our favorite hobby or something? I don't know.
Let's just do that. Let's go over and start with David there.
Thank you very much. My name is David Cogan, and I've been serving on the North Shore School Board for just over a year, and my favorite hobby is baking bread. Hello? That's on. Oh. Up is on and down.
Up is on.
You guys have been through this. Okay. Kent Smith, and I'm also, I've been on the board just over a year, and one of my favorite hobbies is competitive jump rope. Oh, I love the double dutch.
Rob Carden's the city manager, and my favorite hobby is being a city manager.
Good hire.
So Michelle Reed, and I'm the superintendent, and my favorite hobby is supporting Rob in being an effective city manager.
I'm Amy Cast, and I've been serving on the school board since 2013, and my favorite hobby is riding my bike from Woodenville along the slough to Prairie One Ninety-Two.
I'm Sandy Hayes, and I have been on the North Shore School Board since 2009, and my favorite hobbies is a tie between reading and traveling.
I'm Brent Speth. I'm in my second term as a city councilman, and I enjoy a good mountain hike and a good motorcycle ride.
I'm Lori Sperry. I'm actually in my twelfth year as a city council member, which is kind of a crazy thing. So my hobby besides being a city council member is I really enjoy redecorating in the HDTV or whatever that is, the one that you always watch and want to do everything to your house, that one.
So this is my third term on the council, and I enjoy gardening.
Nigel Herbig, this is my fourth year on the council, and I think my hobbies would be reading and playing with my nine-year-old.
I'm David Baker. I'm serving as mayor in the city of Kenmore, and my favorite thing to do is go ask for things for Kenmore from the state and the feds and anybody else who will listen to me.
And he's good at it.
I'm Alan Van Ness. This is my third term. Actually, I started in 2005. My hobby is radio-controlled radio sailing zip model sailboats.
Stacy Januski, I've been on the council two years, and my hobby, when I get a chance to do it, is flying.
You know, we always enjoy these joint meetings with the school board.
We've done this off and on for the past four or five years, but before that, it used to be a joint meeting between Bothell, Woodenville, and school board and us, and that just was too big, and nothing got done, and it got contentious there for a few times, and so I think it's much better when we can sit down as two bodies and sort of tell each other where we're going and what we got planned. I think it works out better for all of us. It gives us a better and deeper understanding of what these two organizations do. So I'm very, very happy that you guys accepted the invitation, or we accepted your invitation, however it worked out. I know I've been bugging my council for over a year to get together here, so I certainly appreciate this opportunity. So with that said, school impact fees.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. So the school district and the board have decided to have school impact fees, and they need the city concurrence to do that, and so they're working with three cities, and I believe the counties as well. And so the cities are doing what they need to put that into place, including Kenmore. We actually need to amend our comprehensive plan in order to be able to make school impact fees possible in our city. So that's what we are doing this year. We're spending 2017 taking this issue to our planning commission. Whenever we amend our comprehensive plan, we always were required by state law to take it to our planning commission, and so that is on the planning commission's work program this year. And then at the end of their work on this, probably like in the fall, I'm looking over at Debbie, fall later this year, they'll have a recommendation for you, and then you will be able to consider the issue late this year, early 2018 at the latest.
So this is not something that's planning to be on the ballot this year?
On the ballot, you mean?
Oh, no, never mind. Never mind. Okay. It's impact fees.
Yeah, school impact fees. But this was meant to be a kind of an informal discussion, questions of the school district, that you may have questions.
Councilmember Sperry.
I think it'd be interesting just to hear a little bit more about, you know, why we need to go with the impact fees and kind of what, I mean, obviously, there's areas that are just political issues and things to do. So just to hear a little bit about how that started. Thanks. I think it is the exponential growth, particularly in the north end, but also in the Kenmore area as well as Woodenville, honestly, which is, we're exploding. Well, they're adding nine hundred units in downtown Woodenville, and because of the boundary redrawing, where we've tried to move kids from the north end further south and from the west further east, but they keep coming in the north and the east side, right? So one of our most populated elementary schools is now well over nine hundred and sixty kids with seventeen portables on site. And so many of our schools were not allowed to add more portables, so where we are able to, we have over a hundred right now, a hundred and twenty-three portables in the district, which is the equivalent facility tells me of four and a half elementary schools. So the impact fees are really necessary at this point, and for a while, we didn't qualify. Our staff worked, you know, with the density and all of the figures, but now we do, and so we feel like it's incumbent on us to collect them from the builders and so forth, so.
Councilmember Herbig.
So I noticed you're only asking for the impact fees on single-family development, and in a place like Kenmore and downtown Woodenville, I'd imagine, too, most of the single families kind of built out, and what you're getting now is multifamily. I mean, we see that across the street, and there are lots of kids that live in those places. So can you tell me why you're just going after impact fees on single-family and not multifamily development?
I can, and I'm ecstatic to tell you why, because, well, that was the question I asked, right? And I've met with the master builders, and they were asking even more robustly than you. But there's a state, the calculation requires that we look at the prior, I'm not going to say it right, and I'm on the record, but there's a year window, and I think it's like ten years out, maybe it's five, I forget which, I didn't bring my notes on that. But if we don't have a certain number of kids coming in construction within the prior five years or ten years, I forget which, then we can't collect impact fees from multifamily housing. So much of the new apartment and condo building are families without kids, and much of the condos and apartment buildings that have many kids are older, and since they're not within that window of new construction, we cannot collect fees. So it's not like we're not choosing to, we just can't collect them for the multifamily right now, because the data doesn't give us the right metrics.
Are you expecting to come back in a few years after kind of all the new constructions happened and look at that, or?
I don't know. I think a lot of the new multifamily housing is not being built larger than one or two bedrooms, and it's difficult for many families, I think, to fit in a one- or two-bedroom apartment, whereas prior to, ten years ago, there were three- and four-bedroom rentals or apartments, and they're just smaller now. So I'm hoping it would come back, but right now, we would love to collect impact fees on multifamily, but we're not able to. The data will not allow it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. You hinted at the answer, but I'd like a little more clarification. Yes, we have exponential growth now, but I've been in this community for forty years, and we've had exponential growth quite often during that forty years. Now, back in 'oh-eight, things sort of slacked off for a while, and now it's rebounding considerably. But we got along without impact fees for those forty years, where other districts had impact fees, and you mentioned something about a special formula that you've got to qualify for in order to collect it. But there's, to my knowledge, hasn't been any move, any impetus to establish impact fees prior to this time, and I'm just wondering what's the big difference now versus, I remember I moved in over in Arrowhead here, and maybe one out of every five lots was built on, and, sorry.
Yeah, it's a great question, and so I'm on the capital bond planning task force. And what was really surprising to me when I got on that task force and looking at the buildings and the schools and the growth and the development is actually the North Shore School District had kind of grown up to about twenty thousand students quite a long time ago, and then kind of flattened out and then shrunk, not just the recession, but during that time, and only recently has grown, and through prudent management practices, I think, the district was adding portables to deal with a lot of the growth, and then after kind of the recession was completely done and heated up, it's gotten to the point where we've decided to build a new property. You can only collect impact fees when you have a project that is driven by the growth that forces you to need to do it. So growth should pay for growth, so you don't select impact fees to build sewer until someone's building a house in which you have to run a sewer to them. And so we did not have to build new elementary school, and that's really where the project is. So the new project that we have for elementary growth, which is even after the new high school, we did not have a need, you had to have the project which was driven by growth, which the elementary school is really that first project that would actually qualify us for almost fifteen years, and not many people in the district know that the school district has not built a new building prior to the high school for twenty years. Timbercrest High School was the last new construction, and so it's really quite significant that the growth is happening. We've grown largely through portables, but we were not eligible to grow, so this notion of the, why haven't we been doing impact fees is because there was no population-driven growth that caused us to build.
I was thinking that we'd be getting along without impact fees, and now all of a sudden, we need impact fees, and I think you're kind of explaining it. Does it have anything to do with the McLeary decision?
Oh, no, completely unrelated.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So this wave, are you going to be overbuilt when this wave's over?
Do you know, I don't have a crystal ball about that, but I suppose if suddenly people all started moving out of town, we would be, but we don't foresee that. The east side is growing quite rapidly.
And I can give an example.
Sure.
An example of this, so we, and it's farther up on, oh, it's next, actually, this might be sideways, in terms of the boundary change that we've planned for for a couple of years that we'll be implementing this fall. We're, with the building of the new high school, able to reconfigure our grades, move sixth grade out of our very crowded elementary school, reconfigure some boundaries in order to accommodate not only growth, but also some legislature-mandated class-size reductions for kindergarten through third grade, we're having to find room for as well. So we began that planning several years ago. We're ready to impact this fall, and low and behold, the growth is faster than we calculated, and Fernwood Elementary. It's not this one? I don't believe so. It might be that one. We don't, this fall, we don't have room for kindergartners. We had planned to have room for kindergartners all these years at Fernwood Elementary, but the growth in unincorporated Snohomish County is so much faster than we even predicted. Even with all these plans and building a new school and all, we still don't have rooms for kindergartners at this elementary school. So the pace of growth is still continually very quickly, if that helps.
So then the impact fees are in Snohomish County also? I mean, it's going to be district-wide? Yeah, okay.
And Bothell and Woodenville, and King County.
Yeah, I was thinking more county-wide, so. Any other questions or comments?
The only other thing that I would think of is, I also recall, I've lived in the Seattle area since the fifties, forties, and I remember when Shoreline School District was just growing like crazy, and now it is matured and it's more adult and less family, and they've closed down schools. Do we foresee that sort of thing happening here? And if so, at what rate and at what time and when?
These are questions we've all asked ourselves. We all, I also have been in the, not quite as long since the forties, but definitely been around a long time, and familiar with Seattle, it had eighty thousand students in the early seventies, and then was down to forty thousand by the early nineties and was closing schools, and now they're back to struggling to find room for all those students. So it's a continuous balance that districts have to deal with. It's much harder to close a school than it is to open one. So it is a huge frustration for our families in the north end of our district that we are not moving fast enough, but I think the part of the reason we're moving at the pace we're at is we want to make sure that we don't end up in a situation where we have a bunch of empty schools. We work with a demographer that shares with us not only projected growth in terms of building, but birth rates. So we are in a little baby boomlet right now in King County and in Washington State, so we know that even if the housing growth were too slow, there are a whole slew of babies coming into our schools in the next five years. We also are being very pragmatic with the new construction. Director Smith referenced the plan to build a new school on our Malpe site. It will be a flexible-use facility, so it will be elementary and middle school, and depending on where the growth is at, where the numbers are at, that's what we will be using. It will be elementary and middle school, but what we're using the majority of the classrooms for depends on where the kids are at. Also, we'll be adding some classroom space between existing elementary and middle school up in the north end with the same idea in mind, to make it flexible, depending on where our needs are at with our students.
Yeah, it's, I can understand. It's really a moving target that you're working towards, and I remember all the growth that we were expecting east of Woodenville and built Timbercrest out, is it Timbercrest that went out there? And then the urban, the Growth Management Act, urban growth boundary stopped the growth out there, and we didn't see that coming. So we're sitting with lots of growth in here and not enough growth to fill the schools out there, so it's a difficult problem.
Every one of them's full now.
Yeah.
So that's something else that just sort of got mentioned there with the Malpe site. Are you guys in the urban growth boundary?
The Malpe site is outside the.
It's outside.
But you can get a conditional use permit.
We're working on our conditional use permit with Snohomish County to, Snohomish County allows us to build outside the urban growth area, but King County does not. It enables us to cite schools outside with a conditional use permit. So Malpe's outside. The urban growth boundary runs right through the North Creek High School campus, the new high school, is what I'm told.
So I'm president of the Sound Cities Association, which is all the cities in King County minus Seattle, and that has been an issue of contention, so, and certainly with the Executive's Office and stuff, so just nothing more than curiosity, so. Any other questions?
Is our school district boundary right there at Malpe? Because Malpe, the Monroe School District, has a school right there at that intersection.
So it is, it would be one of our northernmost schools once we are able to utilize that site, so yes, we're right at the...
Right at the limit of the school district, so you'd be collecting students from a hemicircle around it rather than all the way around it.
And for clarification, it's on Malpe Road. It's not in Malpe. It's on Malpe Road.
On Malpe Road.
So it's a little further south, near the development.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Actually, I do have a question. On the urban growth boundary, so when you build a school there, does that put the, does that mean the county is more apt to move that boundary line further east?
There is a school of thought that says that Snohomish County is more likely to continue moving their line east, and King County is less likely to move it east, is what I'm told.
All right. Should I wrap it up for this one? No, don't. So I, as some of you know, I drive for Uber, and I get to talk to a whole lot of different people, and one of the things has got to do with the next item, and one of the things that I've been able to talk to people about is a ticket into college. And what I'm finding out is the kids that participate in rowing get recruited to universities at a much higher race than other athletes, and this potential rowing between a program here with the North Shore School District and us is really exciting to me. I see this as a tremendous opportunity for students to really go, to really go places, so. Next item then on the agenda is a high school rowing program in Kenmore. Mr. Carleton?
Yes, both items B and C are the fun ones, so.
Isn't that what we ask? Where's the fun?
Yes, exactly. Where is it?
We try.
So as you know, the city councils, one of your top goals is connecting the public with the water. We also call it "get me to the water," and you've been pretty aggressive to that end in recent years, including the passage of our walkways and waterways bond measure, which we'll talk about later. But what's been really great is our superintendent, Michelle Reed, here, has experience with setting up rowing programs, and we have citizens here in Kenmore that are very interested in that topic that have been in discussions with her, and she's also been talking to me and the Pocock Rowing Foundation, and it almost seems as if the stars are aligning. There's different things that are falling into place, but I don't want to steal all of Michelle's thunder, so if you want to talk about it a little more?
Well, thank you, Rob. Actually, it is exciting, and Rob has been amazing through this process. We've just, the Pocock Foundation has just donated four shells or have identified four rowing shells, and are working on a chase boat, and Rob will have some news about a slip to put them in, so so far, we're at no cost. I did sign a letter that Rob drafted to our legislators for grant money, but Mayor Baker is correct. Right now, for every three girls rowing in high school, there's a college scholarship.
That's right.
It's the number-one college scholarship sport for women in the country, which is huge, since right now, and a very high number also for young men, which is why this equity and access agenda that we have is so important. You know, if a child through rowing can get onto school in a manner that they might not otherwise be able to, we're really excited about that, and it's a lifetime sport, you know. We've run into a lot of alumni who live in this North Shore School District who have rowed either for the U or the other, State University on the other side, O'Hare Gonzaga, Seattle Pacific, east coast schools. I mean, rowing's a big deal, and I think we don't, anyhow, so we're really excited about the partnership, and it connects maybe to some other topics later that you'll discuss, but we're excited about that, so.
And I think right now, the only rowing program I know of for high school-age kids is over in Issaquah, and they sort of, I want to be nice here, but it's rather difficult, I think, at times to work with them over there. They have got their own attitudes and whatever, and I would just love to have a program here where we could take a great team and go over there and sort of show them the way we do it here on this end of the lake. So this is really, really exciting.
So Mayor, our expectation is national championship in five years.
There you go. Now you're talking.
And I don't think that's unreasonable.
You let me know who I can talk to and what I need to do, and we will make this happen.
That's awesome. Well, we started a program a year ago in South Kitsap when I left, and this is their first year. I was invited back for their first on-water event, and they have sixty-four kids rowing in their first year, and they're so excited. It's been just an amazing epiphany, I think, or genesis for the program. And of the sixty-four kids, I would say at forty-ish have never turned out for a sport. So it's not, the goal is not to pull kids from other sports, but to provide an opportunity for kids who are perhaps not otherwise involved on a team. I mean, I think ideally, we want to be a district that finds a spot for every child, right, to feel special and to feel a part of something amazing. Bainbridge Island is the program we modeled after, because there are very few public school programs. Most of them are private and require parental assets, which, for the whole equity and access issue, is not what we want. We want any child from any family to be able to row, but Bainbridge Island has a hundred and fifty kids rowing, and they're a three-A high school, so the desire for kids is there, so creating the opportunity, we really appreciate the partnership, so.
We've got a nice practice team over here that we can have fun with.
Oh, yes, well.
So this council is very, very supportive of the kids in our community, and I think over the years, with everything that we have done for kids, this council will go out and do whatever's necessary, so.
So a couple of things along those lines. I think the goal is to be up and running and having a program this fall, correct?
That's correct.
The main season, I think, is in the springtime, but they have a kind of a short practice season in the fall, so that's the goal, and the idea is for us to be having these kids launch off of the far west end of Logg Boom Park. They've identified a nice little, pretty clean gravel beach area that they can launch through, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but the idea is to start out first with Inglemore High School and see how that goes.
Although Woodenville is now saying they are interested.
Yeah, so, but you have the potential of four, four-A high schools, and this is really the only spot in the district where you can launch, and so we're now talking, it could be hundreds of kids someday.
Do we need a pontoon out there temporarily?
We might, yeah, and so this is citing the right.
We're going national.
There you go.
Yeah.
Like that attitude.
Like that attitude.
Facility and the right location is going to be key. I've got my eyes on Lakeside. But, yeah, I think for a program this big, the site at Log Boom, or I mean, the site at Road at Denderd Park is probably too small, given the bottleneck right across the street from Lakeside. So finding a location for a good rowing facility is going to be a challenge, but not impossible.
It's just great competition to chew up there.
Yeah, we sometimes do our little recognize-me thing.
Yes, and that's, yes.
So just adding two things. One, the equity issue, I think, is really, really important in having access to activities that don't really require the parental assets and the investment and the time and other things. And I think that's one of the things that I'm very excited about it. The other thing is, I know that there's some dragon boat races, and I can't speak for the rest of my council, but I would be happy to race the city.
Well, you know what? I know somebody who is involved with dragon boats who would love to have you.
Well, just offer us an opportunity and we'll see.
I think you're talking apples and oranges here, but...
Director Smith, I did row a Spanish row, and I'm just saying.
You got Mike, I'll be your cox and you can be the rower.
But you've got to remember now, paddlers go forward.
So is that a challenge?
I accept.
I see a synergy with Lakeside down here, too. And then our daughter, when she was in high school, rowed for the Green Lake teams, Green Lake Crew. And that's a long trek down there to do that. And then they have to pay those kinds of fees for it, but I don't know whether that's as expensive as going to Lakeside, but there's a lot of activity in the area, and I think it's, it's great. Thank you.
They need more than four boats.
Yeah, I think my wife has been up there talking to the coach at Inglemore about dragon boating, so.
I do know that Vicki Sherwood is hanging the boats in the foyer and drumming up interest, so kids are really excited as they're starting to talk about it, so.
Did not know that. That's cool.
She's staying up.
I was really excited, sir.
Anybody else?
All right, next item. Opportunities to incorporate stormwater education into the school district's curriculum.
Yeah, this is another great topic. We have Richard Sawyer, our surface water manager, here today to talk about that. Richard's been in communications with the school district, but we thought we'd take this issue up with all of them tonight.
No poop toss involved, right?
It might come up.
Might come up?
Yeah. So thank you for having me. This actually started a couple of months ago. I learned Rob was meeting with Dr. Reed and wanted to, kind of through him, you know, hey, will you tell her about me and our surface water and all the stuff we do here? And we'd love to reach out and work with the kids. And I actually was just listening, and I'm actually a product of South Kitsap, so, yeah.
In my other life.
So, yeah, my stormwater fascination started back then in the 80s. In junior high, my science project was going up and lecturing the high school about how they clean out their pool and where they should send their water, so.
Wow, that's amazing.
Yeah, so I guess my hobby is lecturing to people about surface water and stormwater, so. So, well, Rob said this meeting was happening and inviting me to come and just kind of introduce myself in person. So I don't really have a long presentation or anything. It's more of just an introduction. I provided several of the types of opportunities that there could be in the agenda attachment, so, you know. And one, I brought an example of, and they're actually sitting on the end here with Seattle Times, they've got a great newspapers and education program that we've been participating for the last two years. And it produces some great educational materials that teachers use all over the Puget Sound region. And just this last year in Kenmore, there was only one school, the junior high, participating, and I'd love to see that, you know, get connected with interested teachers and get that in all of our schools. And it teaches about salmon and stormwater management. And I've actually been in a random Starbucks and saw one of these filled out on top of the table, so I know that people are looking at them and using them. And I've provided some other examples here as well. But mainly, you know, if there's teachers or educators in the schools that want to incorporate surface water curriculum into their programs, there could be some, you know, maybe not necessarily directly with me, but I could probably point to agencies that have established programs already. King Conservation District has established educational programs that you can just plug and play. Private side, there's Nature Vision has similar programs you can use. There could be grant opportunities. And then also just, you know, teachers, there's students out there interested in this type of, you know, watershed management, surface water-type things. We have volunteer opportunities at city events. The mayor mentioned the poop toss game. My daughter is almost done in high school, but through the years, you know, she's been out lecturing kids on the recess playground about why they shouldn't kick rocks and to catch basins and things, and she comes and helps me operate the poop toss game, teaching about bacterial pollution in streams. And, you know, we've got a great watershed model, so, you know, getting maybe some of the older kids to come and help and teach that to the younger kids, and then they kind of learn through that process as well. So we've got some fun ways to educate the kids in the area about surface water. So that's about all I had to say. You know, I'll take any questions, but mainly just wanted to kind of introduce myself and let you know that those opportunities are out there.
Deputy Mayor, you had something? Yeah, I see this as, my background is in biology and science and so on with my dentistry, but I see this as an application for a lot of things our students are learning in multiple disciplines in college. The biology of the bacteria and the nitrogen cycle, and the engineering and physics of water flow and hydrology and those kinds of things that may, might be touched on in other classes. The biology of the salmon and, you know, the kids are studying that from elementary school on up. I remember helping Bear Creek Elementary, them planting a little salmon fry in the creek and so on, hoping they're going to come back. The riparian vegetation along the streams and how that benefits the salmon and other habitat, so on. So I see this as a combination of a lot of different disciplines, making the didactic instruction that kids are getting in school applicable to real-life stuff. And I think it's a worthwhile thing to do. Thank you.
And I think you make a great point, too, is that I think there's probably a lot of things already happening in the school that, I mean, I would love to learn about as well and see what kids are already learning and doing.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. Sorry. Thank you, Richard. I was curious, have you had any contact with the Brightwater facility with respects to maybe educational opportunities and teaching about, you know, stormwater and treatment and sewage treatment with that facility, maybe for student field trips?
You know, I personally haven't been involved, which is why I'm here, hopefully trying to get something like that going. But just last week, they actually just had a big summit where they, it has more of a wastewater focus, but there's quite a bit of surface water education mixed in that as well. And, you know, my colleagues at Bothell in Kirkland, I think they work with that, with the Brightwater facility. They've got a great training area there, and teachers can come in and learn about wastewater and stormwater and how they work together and impact each other. So, yeah, so, you know, another good example of an opportunity out there that we could all kind of connect with.
Any other questions?
Richard, you wrote a beautiful, detailed memo, and I don't think we have it in front of us, unless I'm mistaken, so we may want to get that out. Just for, maybe as a takeaway, because you had some really specifics that I thought were quite good, so.
And was that attached, Kelly, to the?
It was attached.
Oh.
I mean, I could read it online, but...
Oh, okay. Yeah, I can make sure that's available.
If you can tap it, you can speak.
Okay.
Happening as we speak. Copy, so.
Janet just went to make copies.
Okay.
Any other?
Any other? Excuse me, sorry. I think this sounds like a lot of fun. My daughter is nine, goes to Kenmore, and this is the sort of thing she'd really be able to get into because she really likes bugs and she likes nature. And, you know, where we're situated with the lake and the Spanish River and Swamp Creek and Little Swamp Creek and all the little streams and things, I think it's something that's a little more top of mind to some of the kids around here than it is for kids in the middle of Seattle. So I think this is a cool opportunity, and I think it's neat that we're, you know, looking at this a bit.
Thank you. So I think it's a great idea as well. I know our district science committee is meeting right now, so maybe hooking you up with them as part of that would be helpful. I think a challenge for us is to find elementary material at the reading level for elementary kids that is still meeting your technical needs, just reading through this. It's a wonderful document, but more reading ability. It's more of a junior high than elementary. So I will talk with principals, and maybe if we can connect you to the science committee, that would be a really good entry point, so we can embed that across the system.
Sure. Sounds good.
Yeah. Also, I'm really excited about the new otter pups that are at the zoo now, I guess. The Woodland Zoo has otter pups, three of them, two little boy pups and a girl pup. It's a big deal, the otters. They have little furry faces. They were on the news this morning.
They do eat the salmon, though, but maybe we can get them to change their diet.
Ari, Richard.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
I think they'd eat little salmon because they're little pups.
Yeah, no.
I walked into that one, didn't I? Yeah, but they're adorable.
Yeah.
And shellfish right on there, anyhow, okay.
No, that would be great, yeah.
Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And we will have that out here in just a couple of minutes.
Okay.
School district updates, start times.
So, next year, what we're planning to do to accommodate our adolescent learners, honestly, is to do a 25-minute roll forward of our start times. So our intent currently is to start all schools 25 minutes later than this year, which we'll have to see how that works with traffic patterns, whether that's going to help us or not. So we're trying to model that, thank you, now. But of course, it won't be fully modeled until we actually get it on the road in the fall. But that's the plan right now, is 25 minutes later at all schools. Yeah.
So I used to be one of those parents, you know, that drove the back way, the wrong way into Inglemore to drop the daughter in front of the portable so that she could make the time. So it seemed like it was around seven, something, 10 or so. So what will the new time be then? 7:20, 30?
Yeah, it was 7:45.
That's a big difference. I think that's really going to help a lot of people. I don't know about the traffic part of it, but, yeah, that, I mean, that's a big difference.
Right now, what we're really trying to work with is the later start elementaries and trying to bring them a little earlier with our bus routing. But that's our current challenge. But for high school kids, we think we're making material progress on that.
Well, I know it's, I mean, obviously, there's research that has backed this up for years, and to be able to move a large, complex system like this in a way that helps to accommodate that, that's amazing. Thank you, and I'm sure a lot of people appreciate that.
Right. I think the board has worked on that for 10 or 11 years and staff, so it's not, it's not a spur-of-the-moment decision.
Oh, I know it's not. It's not easy, no.
Thank you.
Coming from Januski.
Somebody slightly nocturnal 11th grader thanks you.
Aren't they all?
They're all nocturnal.
So what are the next steps after this 25-minute shift? Are you planning to make the high schools a little later after that, or?
Yeah, like Dr. Reed mentioned, we do need to study the ramifications, specifically traffic-wise and activity-wise after school and the effect on the late elementaries. This is not considered a final step by the board. So we do, Dr. Reed did find some traffic data crunchers to help us try to refine our transportation schedules, and we'll implement it this year with the boundary change and the grade reconfiguration change. So quite a few changes going on all at the same time to be able to see the result of. And then, like I said, it's not considered closed because 7:45 is still earlier than what studies recommend, but we wanted to make progress and then continue refining going forward.
Thank you.
More members, Smith?
Thank you. And I'm actually attending the National Sleep Conference, Start School Later Conference in, it's April. Yeah, it's April 26th or 27th in Washington, DC. I'm one of the speakers. There's quite a few people there. There's quite a movement because the pediatricians has come out with the clarity. We understand that, you know, the time for an adolescent oftentimes about three hours different. So asking them to get to school at 7:00 is like asking you and I to get to work at 4:00 a.m., which is just, it's just the circadian rhythms. And so we'll be, I'll be learning as well as presenting kind of part of our story and our story and path and trying to find what is that right mix across the system with budget constraints, with not the access to buses. So like Seattle and Bellevue have the ability to change their start times and rely upon a public transportation infrastructure, and there's a lot of different factors about our district and other districts. And so I'll be there, learning from national other entities, and we'll, you know, continue to try and to make progress about what works for all families, what works for all students. It's been a challenge to try and find something that's better and then to really try to find something that you can land on comfortably.
Coming from Harvey.
Is the 7:45, sorry, is the 7:45, is that first period or is it zero or? It's first, okay. I was just surprised that that was the new later time because that was the time I was going to high school at Ingram about 20 years ago, and it still seemed way too early then, so. But 7:10 is just inhumane, so this is a big improvement as far as that goes.
Go Rams. All right. Any other questions? Deputy Mayor?
The thought occurs to me, if we start everything 25 minutes later, do we have any studies to show that the kids won't go to bed 25 minutes later in the evening before? Will they stay up later because they don't have to get up as early?
Yeah, actually, the research that's been coming out does show that, I forget exactly how much it is, but it's close to, you know, half, 50% of the time, they're going to actually sleep more. So if you push it back an hour, they're going to get 30-some minutes more of sleep. So it's, and just be, yeah, yeah, so, no, and the other thing that the research does definitely say is the time management, you know, doing the counseling on the time management. Because if you have a day, and, you know, some of our students that go to our high schools, you know, do eight periods, they're on the this team and then that team and the rowing team and the deck team and the United Nations, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. If they have a 20-hour day, changing the start time isn't going to help them unless they make some different time choices. But I can speak to, since I have adolescents, those who have had it, and there has been a limited opportunity for later start times with a shuttle and some other things that we have had in the district, having a 2 through 7 kind of time period. It's fairly significant and drastic. So, yeah, every minute counts, and even just 25 minutes is going to get better sleep and better health outcomes, reduction in depression, et cetera. It makes a difference.
Coming from Smith.
What is the budget impact on, to make a move like this?
I'm not, we're still calculating that. The 25-minute roll should, the intent was to make that budget neutral. It's if we try to bring some of our later elementary schools earlier. It's that difference between a four-tier start and a three-tier. Right now, we have an early and late start elementary, the middle school and high school, so it's four sort of rotations. As we tighten that up, the costs go up. So right now, we're hoping it's cost-neutral, but it could be in the $600,000 range.
Any other comments, questions? All right.
I think we need cookies. Everybody's getting tired after dinner. We need cookies. There's something.
Yeah, it's a good idea. Boundary changes, North Creek High School opening.
Sure. So the boundary changes are, they were decided a year ago, actually, I believe, in a boundary review committee process, and they'll be implemented in the fall of '17, so in less than six months, I guess, five months from now. And they really shift the district... And they really shift the district, as we mentioned earlier, roughly further to the south and further to the west, really, was kind of the overall, excuse me, to the east was the overall goal. I know, I'm confused, you're right. So the growth is north and west and because of the urban growth area. So we're really shifting, we're allowing the seniors to stay at the three comprehensive high schools, and we're opening North Creek without a senior class. So in the fall of '18, then, we'll add a senior class to North Creek, and we'll have four, four A high schools and then our alternative high school.
Questions? Deputy Mayor.
There was some discussion about the boundary changes and the Kenmore Elementary students coming back together for high school, maybe separating from middle school but coming back together and graduating together. If that's still on track to do what, okay, thank you.
Counselor McCarthy.
How does our school district compare to others around the Puget Sound in size, number of four A schools and?
We're in the top 10 largest high school, or largest school districts in the state, so for us, we're larger than Bellevue, we're larger than Issaquah, we're not quite as large as Lake Washington, we're hovering right with Lake Washington, we're larger than Renton, Shoreline, you know, so I think we're one of the larger districts and growing. Some of the districts are large and not growing, so.
City Mayor.
So I know you all of the city council had some input in this boundary change discussion. It seems like it was a couple of years ago now, and we weren't 100% pleased when we saw a big chunk of Kenmore going off, I think it was to Bothell High School. And so we jumped in and we think we had a really cordial discussion and we offered our input. And I think one, one point that we made that I thought was interesting was that, you know, there's a Woodinville High School and there's a Bothell High School, and believe it or not, there's a Kenmore High School, and it just happens to be named Inglemore. But we really believe that we have a high school that identifies with Kenmore. And that was a big point we were making, and so we were really grateful to see the, to see you all listen to us. We felt like we were being listened to, and we were really pleased with the ultimate outcome. So thank you very much for allowing us to offer that input.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we really appreciate the way you guys listen to us. It meant a lot, it meant a lot to the community, so thank you for that opportunity.
Glad we could work together on it.
Okay, anything else? Okay. The elephant in the row. Update on legislation being proposed in Olympia to fully fund education, how might that affect our property taxes? Am I, no, I'm, oh, never mind, I was jumping ahead. Okay. Upcoming school district levy or levies?
Or levies. So I'm going to talk about that in simplest to most complex. So as we referenced before, because of our growth, because of the fact we have the equivalent of four and a half elementary schools and portables right now, we are planning on requesting from the voters a capital bond to build two new facilities, and that will be on the ballot in February 2018. So we're currently going through the process right now of finalizing what those plans would be. Like Director Hayes was mentioning, off of Maltby Road, it's a kindergarten through eighth-grade facility, and it's going to be, it is in the process of being designed to be a flexible space so that as the bubbles of growth come through, it can be heavily elementary, heavily middle school. Similarly, a smaller building with 20 classrooms, we would like to request the money to be built in between Skyview Junior High and Canyon Creek Elementary with the same idea. That happens to be a sloped property, which is something we can take advantage of. The top floor will, will exit on the same level as the elementary school, and the bottom floor will exit on the same level as the junior, the middle school. So that, again, a flex space that we can utilize in different ways as the ways of growth come through. So that, we don't have a final dollar amount on that because, of course, in a district our size, we still do have a lot of upkeep and maintenance projects around the district that we're currently studying to see. So in August, September, we should have a firmer idea of what, what dollar amounts we want to plan on moving forward with that. Also, a technology levy, we typically, every four years, request from the voters as well support with that to support technology initiatives in the district. We plan on requesting that again. Last time around, it was $8 million, so eight to 10 is kind of the penciled-in amount right now, again, to be finalized early fall. The last one is our maintenance and operations levy. And that has to do with the conversation in Olympia about school funding in general. Right now, we are penciling in to maintain the current maintenance and operations levy with the structure of that TBD based on the conversation currently underway within our state legislature.
If I can add one item on that, so I'm on the committee for the capital bond part of that, which the district has done every four years, which is really quite thoughtful. Some of the districts, if you watch in the news, have come out with really large numbers and they kind of wait along time, and it's just, there's issues that happen with that. This district has really had the foresight and I think kind of the systematic amount, the process that we use on that in public process, just like all your processes, and involves community, involves quite a few different aspects of the school district, as well as people who are outside the school district. And so we're in that public determination process, all that information's on our website to see what that would look like and how that would go. And historically, the district has tried to keep a flat tax rate, and then if property values go up, that does turn into some kind of a, sometimes a tax increase in total, but it tends, it is a prudent philosophy and there's lots of communication out throughout that process. So we're in that process, it's a public process, just like any other government, and, and so we're, we'll be doing that. The two pieces that are somewhat easier are the bond and the technology levy. The next one is the one that's much more difficult, that's the next agenda item. But just want to make sure you know, it's a very public process and all the things are already on the, online, and they'll continue to be as we move through that.
The two levies, the technology and the operation, maintenance levy, are those replacing levies that are expiring?
Yes.
Okay. But going at a little higher rate than they were before, is costs are more?
Well, and like Director Smith mentioned, with the idea that we would maintain a flat tax rate, but because of the growth, we have more property owners in the district now, so.
More needs, too.
And more needs as well, exactly. So the, the tax rate, we're, our goal, just like the history of North Shore, is to maintain that tax rate. But the total dollar amount with the technology would inch up $2 million because of the growth of the tax base.
Now, the question that comes to my mind, and I imagine others, is with what's going on in Olympia, does some of this levy dollars that we're talking about here, is that basic education? I mean, computers are pretty basic in today's society. Now, is that going to be covered under McCleary? And do we really need this levy?
So Director Hayes is our legislative representative, so.
I'm going to wonk you out here with some math. So the technology levy was created years ago because it was discovered that it's not, was not considered part of basic ed, and then they discovered, we need technology. So they, Olympia allowed us to raise money to purchase technology through a technology levy. So that's, and it, it's just kind of sort of its own little thing out there. And we in North Shore recognize that it's part of the overall picture of taxes to fund education, so it's, we try to be as robust as we can, but recognize it falls within the complete picture with the bond and the maintenance and operation levy, where things are really challenging, and I'm looking right at Nigel because you're going to fix this for us. No, if you can take this story back, because this is where this is getting incredibly challenging for us, the state back in the 70s, when the last time they were sued for not fully funding education, created a limit to the amount that we can raise in our maintenance and operations levies, and it's a percentage based on how much the state gives us. And every time there's a recession or they cut funding, they increase the percentage. So the last time they increased the percentage was in 2010 during the Great Recession. So we're currently, that we can raise in our levies 28.9% of what the state gives us here in North Shore. When we plan our maintenance and operation, we ask for a dollar amount, and we have to predict what the state will be giving us each year during the four-year levy so that we can estimate what, and assume that the 28.9% won't change during the course of the four years. We have two things going on with us right now. One, that addition, it was an additional 4% that was added to our total levy in 2010 is sunset's next January. But we don't have McCleary solved yet. So we have been asking the state legislature to grant us a one-year extension so that we can plan for next year, because we're in the process of not only planning our bond and levy, but also our budget for next year. So that's complication number one. And then there are many proposals out there that completely change what levies will look like, as well as what they can pay for. So we'd love to give you a much more complete answer to this, but a lot of it is just so dependent on what happens in the next couple of months in Olympia.
So it's another moving target.
It is a huge moving target right now.
Yes, Counselor Herbert.
So I'm curious, have you guys, have you reached the point now where you're sending out pink slips or avoided that? Are you digging into reserves to kind of make up the levy cliff hole that may exist in your budget?
So North Shore, in our contract, it's May 15th is the notice date, so we've got some time, we're, we're holding on to it. Where this is really impacting us is hiring.
Yeah.
It's a, we desperately need teachers. We were just having a conversation, but we need kindergarten teachers, we need elementary school teachers, we need them at every level, but.
Yeah, certainty doesn't help when somebody's looking to take a job.
It makes it very challenging. And we have an equity project, and we want to diversify our staff, that's going to require us going out to state, two seconds of Google research, nobody's going to take that risk.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other? All right, now, McCleary, and how it might change property taxes.
There is four proposals currently right now? Am I tracking the five?
I think there's.
If you count the governors.
Well, there's three main ones. I think the moderate Democrat one is really just, they're hearing it just to be nice, but really the two are the Senate Republican and the Democrat proposals that are really the two.
And they would.
And then there's the last three days of the session is really.
And they would change, they would change the structure of property taxes. It's, at some, at some level, it's hard, but we've heard so many different things, it's hard for us to say exactly how they would change. And by what? If we would, if we would see a larger tax bill, if we would see a larger tax bill but maybe not more receipts into the school district, is the possibility that's been floated? So we're not, we, this is what's making budgeting so challenging.
Yeah. So the 28.9%, or 28% is the state limit of how much you can raise in levies, and that's an equity issue, and there are districts around the state that cannot raise that amount of money. So one of the talks currently in Olympia is to lower that percentage so that you can raise less. The idea being that the state would increase the state funding. Where we have a huge question mark on that is that there hasn't been a proposal that really has the funding behind it to increase the state funding. And just changing the levy structure doesn't address the McCleary decision, which is that the state is underfunding education. So it's hard for us to really say much when we are not seeing a whole lot of progress in terms of having this done by April 23rd. So we're really just in wait-and-see mode as to what can happen. There are a lot of different suggestions. Certainly, one is to increase the state property tax, lower the local property tax, and then while property tax kind of stays the same here in North Shore, the money goes into the state coffers and then comes back at a smaller rate into North Shore so that more of it can go into other parts of the state that are not able to raise as much in local property taxes. I'm personally not overly optimistic that that's going to get very far, but that's one of the ideas that's out there. If they don't do a whole lot different, then we will move forward with a little increase in money. And again, if the state increases how much we are given, that percentage of how much we can raise in local levy, I mean, that's really the key, is what's the percentage that we can raise in local levy dollars and how much does the state give us? And that's so unknown.
If I'm not mistaken, there is, there is property tax the state can take that has not taken, so it could be interesting to see.
Yes.
I just want to clarify, the MNO levy that you're taking that's based on the state money that's coming in, if you were to go to the, you know, if you take the 28%, that's all been voter-approved though, right?
It was approved in 2014.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to clarify for anybody who might be questioning.
Yes, yes, we, yeah.
Anybody else? Moving on. Partnership opportunities.
So when we, it became aware from the, in the school board meetings that we were going to have this great opportunity to meet with you all, we, we were brainstorming a little bit. There was an idea that Director Smith had talked about that he wanted to bring forward? I don't, if you want to provide the background.
Sure. So as we've been talking about, we've met with the Bothell and the Woodinville city councils, and a couple of different ideas have arisen about using space. So the school district, at least one individual said, well, you guys are land-rich, you know, and we don't, some of us say, we don't have land, so you guys have this land, you have this space, you have fields, and, and we would like to have ballfields and play spaces and community events, you have libraries in all your schools. And just to anchor from a, from a physical building perspective, you may or may not, we have 20 elementary schools, we have the Sorenson pre-K building, we have six junior high, middle schools, and now four high schools. So we have 30-plus buildings plus an alternative high school. But the, the ability to have play space or field space and how that would work, and so some of us have had informal conversations with the North Shore Parks and Rec Service Area. The district is also open, of course, last time we met with you, some of us weren't aware that the park space by Morland's is actually owned by the city, not by the school district, even though most people would walk onto that space and think that's the school playground, it's actually the park space. So, so the various ways in which we could partner and think through those things, there's also the issue of an aquatic facility, that you may or may not be aware that the school district does not have a competition swimming pool that it has access to. There is a pool that is in one of the junior highs that is used for special needs students, it's shallow and it's warm, it's not a practice swimming facility in any, in any sense. But the, the idea of an aquatic center or aquatic pool, those of you who've been in the area for a long time may be familiar with the Forward Thrust Pools that were built a long time ago, many of them have been shuttered, one of which was, you know, in downtown Bothell. And so the opportunity of thinking about what would be the ways in which a district as large as we are and with the various partners we have would. as large as we are, and with the various partners we have, would look for those opportunities. And so I think it's a matter of a series of conversations, what would be the best way for us to partner, to work together, to find the ways to meet the needs. So if you are looking for a public swimming pool in Kenmore, Bothell, or Woodinville, there is not essentially a public swimming pool, which is really kind of, kind of amazing. So the park space, as well as the public swimming pool, I think are areas in which can, you know, ongoing conversations would be really fruitful.
Councilmember Herbig.
Yeah, this is an issue that I've actually been talking with some citizens about just recently. There are some folks who are very worked up about the want for a pool, and I tend to agree with them, that it's something that the community needs and would support. I would also point out that Kirkland was trying, they had their ballot measure a couple years ago, maybe it was just last year, I can't remember, to build a pool, and that failed, but there's a want there also. So there's definitely a need in this general area, and I at least am open for looking at possibilities to work together across jurisdictions to kind of make something happen. So I think it'd be a positive for the whole area, so.
There's quite a bit to be learned from the way in which Kirkland structured their information, and, and people, I think, misunderstood and were not comfortable with the structure. It wasn't that they didn't, there was strong support for kind of the, the facility, but not for the structure, and I think that's something that all of us would want to learn. And I think there is, that's community support, but there's often times a lack of clarity on, you know, various operating items, capital items, et cetera.
I think, and Councilmember Smith, you can correct me on this, but there, there was an idea of a pool in the, in the North Shore Parks and Recreation area, but I think it was more than a pool. It was a wave pool and all sorts of different things, and more of a recreational thing than it was something, so, you want to add to that?
Yeah, and Bill Evans was the one who kind of drove that, I believe, and, and he was with the North Shore Park Service Recreation Area, and his, that project never really got, got any legs to it, and a lot of it happened, unfortunately for the project, but it was about kind of '06, '07, and, and I think it, it sort of died for a pretty natural death because of the economic conditions. But, but also there, there really wasn't a clear support path for it either. And, and I know that the features of that, and part of the, this is the part that I am the least familiar with, but am really interested in knowing about, but I know that that, that plan had a lot of, like you said, the bells and whistles to, to attract all the other paying customers that would use it for, I guess, non-school and non-therapeutic reasons and whatnot. And I am curious if you could share, Ken, if you could tell us anything about, you said the structure was wrong with the, the Kirkland bond, because I followed it, and I had conversations with a couple of people that were strong proponents of it, and I'm just curious if you could share any insight on to why you think that failed?
I think the primary opposition to it was it was seen as a funding mechanism with no cap, so that they could have raised unlimited money. And, and it wasn't limited to, you know, the aquatics facility costs 35 million, or whatever it was, you're only going to borrow 35 million and you're done. It was like you're creating a new government that could tax unlimited, and that was something that was, and then the governance structure of that taxing entity was not clear and comfortable to the people. So it was seen as a runaway entity, is what they were creating, not a some certain for a project certain. And so I think, I think that would be the, one of the biggest learnings, is no matter who would enter into this activity, making sure that you're funding, if you're asking for funding or for support, it's a specific project, it starts, it ends, it's built, and then here's who and how it's operated and, and you. So I think the memorandum of operating, understanding if it were to be used across anything on operations is a big issue, and then capping the, the capital cost and making sure that that was a specific amount that people were voting, I think was the big barrier in that particular situation.
Okay, no, I appreciate that, and if you don't mind, Mayor, I just, I was going to follow up on that, and I don't know if, if you're all familiar with the North Shore Park Service area, but it is the same boundary as the district, and, and so the only thing, we don't do anything to do with Parks and Rec, really, it's all the senior center right now. And so it is taking a leap into a whole different category of services, if that's what happens with that district, and how it may partner with the North Shore School District or the municipalities.
I know that NPRSA pool goes back to when I was, got, first got on the council back in 2004, 2005, and it was, you know, wild waves. I mean, that's what it was. It was a big commercial water park, and I don't think it ever lost that.
Well, and...
And that's not really, I think, what the public wanted, so.
Well, actually, and, and what's interesting, though, is, is, and that's kind of like what the Lynnwood Aquatic Center is, and, and the people who look at these and do it, well, actually, one of my master's students did his thesis on pools and pool facilities and Forward Thrust pools that kind of were disappearing, and then what was replacing them. And that idea of the, the pool plus the community center, putting it in a fairly reasonably trafficked area, making it a hub of activity, is actually the model that makes a lot of sense, and they recover a good bit, if not all of their operating costs, when none in that way. Snohomish has a very vibrant aquatic center as well, so there's, there's a lot of different ways to structure it, but yeah, you absolutely have to make it sure it's something that the community wants and needs.
Yeah, no, I agree, but I think it was seen more as a wave park than it was as it, as a, as a pool that could be used for competition by the high schools and everything else. It was just seen more as, like I said, a wave park. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, along those same lines, yes. It has to, an aquatics facility, in order to pay for itself or even come close to it, has to offer all these other services that can generate some revenue. Montlake Terrace, I don't know what, they subsidize their pool and, and aquatic center up there now, but I remember probably six, eight years ago, it was $600,000 a year they subsidized this pool, even with the store and the profits and the classes and all the stuff that goes on there. So it's, it's a big-ticket item. And, and so, as I recall, this North Par, North Shore Parks and Recreation Aquatic Center was designed to, to require as little subsidy as possible, and to do that, you've got to make it have the, you know, a lazy river and all those fun things that people will pay to go to. Then the other question was, if this was for the whole North Shore area, and say it's out in Woodinville, that's not convenient for you guys that are living on the south side of Kenmore. And so, and people say, "Hey, do we really have to go there?" Okay, so it's in, in Bothell. Well, everything, Bothell is centered to the district, okay, does everything have to go to Bothell? And so then there was some jurisdictional turf wars there, you know, that were going on, and so that contributed to it. One by one, different jurisdictions sort of fell away. Another individual here in Kenmore that was really big in that was Bill Leake, was really a driving force in trying to get this thing going, and it, and it just, one by one, the different people fell away, different jurisdictions fell away, until it was just Kenmore, they were the only ones that was left. We were the only ones left. Now, I also had an office out in Monroe, and I know the city of Monroe, and I don't know whether the school district's part of it or not, but the city of Monroe partnered with the YMCA for their pool facility out there. Yeah, there's membership, but I don't know how it all works when you put it all together. And maybe that would be an opportunity for the, for the district and the three cities to go together. Bothell already has a pool with the YMCA, and if the cities, I don't know whether these are competition pools, or whether they're worthwhile to train at for swim teams, but maybe, maybe with the YMCA, there could be a competition, kind of a pool built and facility here in Kenmore, one in Woodinville, and upgrade the one in Bothell, with the cities, the school district, and the YMCA all working together. You run into a lot of problems when you, when you have multi-jurisdictional involvement in, in a project like that, but it can be done. And often, if several organizations are involved in it, you can get the job done where one alone can't do it. So it takes some creative thinking.
Councilmember Herbig.
Yeah, I grew up in Wallingford, and I'm going to the Evans Pool up by Green Lake, which is a pool and a community center, and there's a lot of other stuff going around there, and it really is kind of the hub, or at least when I was a kid, it was kind of the hub of the area. And I've been to the Rainier Beach, the new community center they have down there, which is a pool and has water slides, but it also has meeting rooms, and it has all this community center stuff, and it's become kind of the heart of the neighborhood for folks and a real gathering place. So, I don't know, I, I'm excited at the prospect of really digging into this, because I, I think there's a lot of upside to the area.
Hey, hang on, Councilmember Sperry.
Thank you. Director Smith, have you had a chance to, or were you, to see the previous study that the PRSA did on it?
Absolutely, and, and we talked about that with Bothell, and then I've talked about it with Bill Leake and, and with others, so yeah, it's, it's, and it was, you know, pencils-out-ish, so...
Perfect, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, but it's, you really got to find, I think it's the thing, is there's, there's enough ideas and energies there, you just got to, the magic has to come together at some point in time and place. But yeah, it's a goo, and it's a pretty well-done study, I think.
Well, good, because we paid money for that, so thank you.
One last thing on the collaboration on different possibilities, and that is with, I appreciate you bringing it up with regards to the recreational spaces that the school district has, and, and I think there is a lot of opportunity there, and I know you and I have spoken about it, and I've spoken with some other council members in other cities about it, and I think that would be an area that I'm hoping we can, maybe, moving forward, we can learn and, and maybe work together on some, some good ideas.
So, just to follow up on Deputy Mayor Van Ness, in the community I came from, that was what we actually did do, the county and the city and the school district and the YMCA partnered. That's how the Silverdale YMCA was built. The county deeded a certain amount of land for a dollar a year to build the facility on. They received a state grant as part of that, then they have naming rights that they utilize, but they were able to come together. Same with the Sumner YMCA recently, which is huge, and then they're fully subscribed, actually, they were fully subscribed within three months, which left the maintenance of the facility up to those members, right, and not the district or the city, but they did combine for land and some seed money for building. So I think it's a real possibility.
I think Snohomish also, here recently, worked with the YMCA and did some stuff with, with the pool, so.
So I could make contact with the YMCA, is there anybody from the council that would want to be part of that conversation?
Well, Councilmember Smith's INPRSA person.
But it sounds like there've been enough other projects that are similar to what we need here, that we're not reinventing the wheel completely, and there's other, other plans that we could pattern or something after.
I know Elaine Cook from the Woodinville City Council's also very interested in...
Good, James.
And James, so maybe that's a small group to start? Okay, thank you.
All right, anybody else? All right, Safe Place.
So, thank you for having this on the agenda. It's a, a project, really, that was brought to us by Seattle, and I think is part of a bullying awareness program, and bringing light to that topic for school districts and law enforcement. I think it can be as small a program or large as a city or district wishes. What we're contemplating right now is simply the ability to work with the school district, not your business community, we're not, you know, that's something you would do separately, but it's an opportunity for us, we're going to be reviewing our bullying policy this spring, and to do that with law enforcement, I know the Woodinville law enforcement in Bothell are planning to work with us to rewrite our bullying policy, review it and revise it, and then really just be a partner in enforcing that consistently across all the jurisdictions. So there is a sticker, I think, that's involved, that they've modified for our placement within the schools, not within the city, unless you chose, but we're not asking for that, we're just asking to make sure that we review our policy, revise it where necessary, and make sure our staff understand how to implement it moving forward. So we'd appreciate partnering with Kenmore as well, so that our schools within the Kenmore service area would be able to fly the sticker, as well as all the schools in Bothell and Woodinville. This is also a PTA council initiative, for our PTA council for the district, they have, they've made this one of their platform topics in terms of student safety.
Councilmember Sperry.
Well, thank you for helping provide a little bit more clarity, although I, I do still have a question.
Sure.
And, because all of the materials that I saw were from the Seattle Police Department, and they were all geared towards just one specific group of people, and had a rainbow sticker. And when we were, first got the email about this as council members, it was, "Hey, the school district's, you know, interested in doing Safe Place." Well, there's at least two other safe places, and there's the yellow stickers, the, the program that King County has, and with Friends of Youth, and then that is for children that are in crisis, and you probably are familiar with Kathy Lambert's work with the school buses, where someone that's, you know, trying to get out of a bad situation, or, you know, God forbid, but, you know, trafficked or whatever, they're, you know, they can go to the bus, and there's, the bus drivers are trained to connect the people, so say it's a young woman, just, you know, because often that, that happens. And so then that person can be, you know, escape the situation and connect with a trained person that will provide social work and connect them. And so that, to me, feels very powerful, very helpful, I mean, you know, it's something that could go way beyond the school thing, but, but the little bit that I've seen of, if you're modeling this after the Seattle program, I'm just having a hard time understanding what the city's role or law enforcement's role, and it just feels to me like it's really, I don't really know what it is, it just, it feels confusing to me, I guess. You know, I did review the bullying policies that you have on your thing, and I think that's great to have that more clear, I think that's important for everybody, I think we can all agree on that. So I still am a little confused, I guess.
So, I don't think, we're not asking for any financial resource from the city or from the law enforcement from Kenmore, simply a recognition that they're part of the review and rewrite of our policy, and that they would respond to any issues of bullying or harassment similarly to our other jurisdictions, and it really just signals that to students and families. So it's not a, like, a huge commitment at this point.
So what do you do now if there's a bullying situation? You don't call 911 or anything, right? I mean, obviously.
Well, it depends on how serious it is, to be honest.
Okay, so, so what would be an example of why you would call? I mean, so this is something you're doing now, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So, not that we would want to have, I mean, we had police action here a couple weeks ago, and, or not a week ago, a week ago, and it happened to be right next to where my mom lives, and they said, "So what was going on?" You know, so we, you know, we get it, sometimes you need to call, and that's important, so could you give me an example of the type of thing where you, you would initiate a 911 call for?
An assault.
Okay, so that, and that's something that's happening now, right? I mean, not, not that the assault is happening now, but that is your current policy, that you call 911 for these kinds of things?
If it's something that, I don't know that 911, but we have student resource officer, or school resource officer, so...
Right, yeah, yeah, I know that, that's been really a good thing.
We would work with folks at our different schools, but if the assault was serious enough, of course, we would call 911, or if it would be categorized in the hate crime category. And I think that's what we're trying to get a tighter definition on, right, or a persistent threat to a particular child. So those are things we would want to handle similarly across the entire system and not have it be jurisdictionally dependent. So it's an opportunity, the meeting I attended, all the police... So, it's an opportunity, the meeting I attended, all the police chiefs from the three cities and the counties were present, and the discussion was really about how do we make sure if a situation happens in Woodinville or Inglemore, right, Bothell or the new high school, that they're handled similarly. And that's an opportunity to have that happen. And I think, again, the PTA, our parents in the community have a need to believe that that's going to be consistent as well.
Well, that's great that you're, that's the type of support that you're getting and all that, yeah. No, well, I think everybody appreciates, you know, a consistency as much as you can, but yet everybody's individual and each school has their own little, you know, personality and everything.
Sure, and I think that, well, you see that even at athletic events, right? The student bodies are very, they have their own personalities, and we have phenomenal children, really, in the district. I would also say that while the original sticker was really targeted at perhaps one group of children, we were able to modify the title, though not the color of the decal. So, I think it's, sorry, Rob, I don't want to look at you, but we did modify it so it's not just dedicated to a particular group of children, but really all children, right? So, we did make that adjustment.
Deputy Mayor.
See how I can say this sensitive way? I grew up, I was about the youngest kid in my class, and I was a late mature as well. And I was a fat kid. I'm still a fat, older kid. But I was bullied consistently, and I think I grew up tougher because of it. But then I grew up and I raised a family, and I watched my kids grow up in the school system. And I remember back in junior high how it was cool to belittle somebody and to bully somebody. It made of those immature teenagers feel bigger themselves, giving them a better self-image by putting somebody else down. And that's bullying. And it doesn't feel good to be the person that's belittled and put down. And I was there, and that, this was back in the 50s, okay? It hasn't changed. I watched my teenagers go through it, now they're in their 40s, I see grandkids going through it, it's the same kind of an attitude today. It's part of growing up. And it's not limited to gay and lesbian communities, it's everybody. And I do have some difficulty with rainbows, which really identifies it with that demographic group. But it's everybody that should be aware of the fact that bullying hurts, no matter who you are, who the victim is. And fortunately, most kids grow up and by the time they get into high school and on into college, they've outgrown that, and hopefully as adults, they don't act that way anymore. But some never outgrow it, unfortunately. And maybe there can be something in the enforcement of bullying to, for all groups, don't differentiate between different groups. Maybe it becomes a hate crime if it's a certain group and it's more severe, but still, it's bullying. And I think if there was a way that we could educate our kids from elementary school on up so that they don't go through this, this kind of a phase, or get through it really quickly. My son graduated in 94, never did that. He was nice to everybody. All the girls thought he was in love with them because he was nice to them all, he talked to them all, said hi to them all, and got him into trouble a number of times. But, but, you know, most kids do go through that put-down bullying stage, which if there was something that we can do through this program, and to zoom in on LGBTQ community with a rainbow, whether you've changed the title or not, minimizes the damaging effect of this kind of behavior on everybody. It's not just that one group. So, I'd urge you to make it an overall policy for all groups, all kids.
So, I think we're, that's the intent, is to make it for all kids, no question. In bullying research, there is a body of research, it is the single greatest character trait that carries over from adolescence to adulthood. You can unlearn a lot of things much easier than bullying, and you see that, the research is pretty clear about that. It's also, over the many years, been one of the tightest linked to school shootings has been children who feel marginalized by their peers or in some way have been bullied, right? And for better or worse, even though we're not calling out the gay and lesbian or gender identity or transgender students as specifically our target, they have the, one of the highest suicide rates of our teenagers or adolescents as a consequence to being bullied of any other subgroup of students. So, they do sort of take a point of interest when we look at that.
Is that definitely a cause and effect relationship?
I think that there is research that would indicate that, absolutely, that there is just a, the trauma rate for those students is much higher. So, Sandy?
Yeah, I was just going to say that the area where this has changed, I agree that bullying happened in our age, but where it's different is that we have an internet that makes it more pervasive and it makes it permanent. So, we're not only working to help the kids that are being bullied, but we need to work with the kids that are doing the bullying because it becomes a part of their identity on the internet in both ways. So, it's, it's a much more prevalent thing in their world than it was in ours. It could, you could go to school and you could come home and you were done with the bullying. Today, it's 24 hours, seven days a week. And the other is that, to get, to get to your point, is that it's not within a school anymore, and that's where we need your help, is that we have kids that are in communities that involve all of our high schools. And so, we need consistency across our district because kids are in groups that involve all the schools. And so, it just, it will be helpful if we can have consistency in how we respond so that it, yes, schools have identities, but there's so much blending anymore in that digital world.
Councilmember Curtis and Councilmember Herbie.
So, I work with Northwest, I mean, with Evergreen Hospital, and we have a Safe Places, I think it's called Safe Places program at our two emergency rooms. So, we have the one in Kirkland and the one down in Redmond. And then we also work with the Friends of Youth, and we're looking at maybe doing something similar in Duval. So, how does that program fit with this program? It's mostly at abusive family situations, but I know some of it does involve children. But, so how are the two linked? Is it one big, huge program? Is it two different programs with a similar name that are totally unrelated?
I think they're somewhat unrelated but connected in that they involve mental health outcomes, right? I know Lorene Burton and Aileen Hammer and the Crooks, Mr. and Mrs. Crook, are going to be at our board study session coming up next month to talk about how we blend the work that they're doing, that Evergreen's doing with mental health, and the work we're doing as a district with mental health. So, they're different programs, but they need to be connected.
Councilmember Herbie.
So, I was bullied as a middle schooler, and I want to say I think this is a great thing that you guys are trying to do here. I think it's frankly ridiculous that we're all arguing over whether there's a flag or not or a rainbow on this. I think it's really easy for folks who aren't part of the LGBTQ community to rec, to, it's easy to not see what folks in that community are dealing with on a day-to-day basis. I was just looking at some statistics, and 27% of school population deals with bullying, but 86% of LGBTQ community deals with bullying in school. To say that we shouldn't, to have offense or to take offense at the plight of a community that's being called out and is being particularly hit by this problem is a lot like, is a lot like folks seeing the Black Lives Matter movement happening in response to police shootings and responding with, well, all lives matter. Well, yes, all lives do matter, but that community is being particularly affected, and there's nothing wrong in saying that publicly and making special outreach to that community to try to protect them from something that is taking their lives, something like 28% of LGBTQ kids don't stop going to school at some point. I mean, what happens to these kids because society isn't willing to come out and say, we accept you? What happens because we have reluctance about putting a rainbow on a sticker, of all things? That's sort of just social unacceptable, you know, the unwillingness for folks to just, say, you're one of us, we accept you, is what drives some of this stuff here. So, I, I'm totally on board with this, and I appreciate the work you guys are doing, and I hope that we're able to get on board with what you guys are doing. Thank you.
Councilmember Danuski.
Yep, I'm on board with this. I like what I hear. I know schools are doing a lot more education around bullying, and so, yeah, I'm very supportive of this.
So, I really applaud you for looking at your bullying policies and seeing what can be done and bringing all of the communities in on this. In junior high school, I was from the poor side of town, I didn't fit in, got bullied incessantly. In high school, I was the wrong color, and I only lasted a semester there. So, I certainly understand bullying from a different perspective, and I don't think it's necessarily just LGBTQ. I think there are a lot of, there is a lot of bullying go on, going on that's a lot more than that. And I think that anything that we can do to help you as a district, I'm certainly in favor of doing. So, anyway. Councilmember Sperry.
So, I'm going to come at this from a little different perspective. I didn't really talk about it, but I actually worked for the school district for a while, and I worked in the, as a parent educator. And it's really a great job because you get to have a connection with the kids, you know, that often isn't possible in the larger classroom. And I really, one of the things that I was really shocked by when I first came there was the way that students talked and just the, frankly, the meanness, and these are the good kids. And then I went home and watched South Park, and I thought, well, that's why they all talk like that, because I was just shocked, you know, how can they talk to me like this? And so, the different aspect of this, you know, I mean, I obviously, you know, I don't think anybody here is opposed to, you know, making sure that, dealing with the whole bullying issue. If you ever have an anti-bullying assembly, it looks like you have some speakers here too, so. But I think that we, my background is also in communication, and we, I think we're missing something, and that kids really don't know how, and frankly, adults now, really don't know how to speak kindly, and those basic communication skills, you know, because all the, most research talks about if you want to stop a bad habit, it's not about just stopping the bad habit, it's about replacing it with a positive. And so, that would be an area of interest that I would have, you know, what is it that we can do? You know, just, we used to call it random acts of kindness, but now I think there's like a whole intentional kindness thing where you can sign up and, you know, try to be kind to people and all that, and, you know, if you're busy doing that, it's, you know, you don't have as much time to do all the other stuff. So, that, to me, seems like a piece that might want to be looked at, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, I just, I kind of would like to come full circle. Can you tell us what you, what you need from the city on this, or what you're, just sort of what you see as the next step?
So, I think the next step would be for you, essentially, to be able to support participation of the Kenmore Police Department as a joint partner with the Bothell, Woodinville, Sonomish County and King County law enforcement departments in our district in being a Safe Place District. So, there's a decal that would go on our schools, every school in the North Shore District, following our review and revision of our bullying and harassment policy. And then we would have agreements on how we would be responding with law enforcement that would be part of that process, and that's it.
Okay. So, we, so, Rob, as.
Yeah, so I think that's the question, is this, does the city officially want to be a partner with this and have the same police response calls as the other schools that are going to be participating in this?
So, will you be then coming to us with, is this an agenda item?
Yeah, I think this was just kind of an informal back-and-forth conversation with the school district, but if you as a city council want to take some time at a future council meeting to discuss how you officially, what official stance you want to take on it, that's up to you.
Well, and I think to answer the question further, we would bring a request that's more formal than this conversation, and the request would be worded similarly for all the jurisdictions, because I think at some point, we would want to do some kind of a joint press release that all organizations are on board, here's the plan, here's what we're going to do, and just be really clear. And our board, frankly, I need to make sure I provide something in greater detail for them, likely that mirrors the PTA language that's come to us.
Okay, no, that's great. Well, then, I mean, I would personally, I'd like to suggest that when we get that information, then we can just have a discussion here. I mean, I know we've covered most everything, but I don't think we really know what we're, what the end result was, so I think it would be nice to do that.
Yeah, and I sort of feel strongly that I would love to have the students in Kenmore be with the students in the rest of the North Shore school system, not the odd man out.
Well, it seemed odd to not, right?
Yeah, so, all right. Thank you. All right. Mr. Carlenzy.
All right.
The show is yours.
Okay, I think I can get through a lot of this pretty quickly. And just a few slides, so the few of you who's back sort of the screen, you may want to just turn around and take a look. But the city started an initiative back in August of 2015 called Imagine Kenmore, and it was an initiative that was overseen and funded by the city council, and the, Imagine Kenmore had, really had one basic question, and that was, what do our citizens want to see in the form of parks and traffic safety improvements, and how much are they willing to pay for those improvements? So, we went through a series of community meetings and open houses and surveys and online interactive methods and all these different ways to get public input, and we got hundreds of citizens to participate. And long story short, they said two things. They said, surprise, surprise, get me to the water. And then they also said they wanted to see bike lanes and new sidewalks on arterials. And so, we sifted through all the data and looked at what all the citizens were asking for, and we came up with five projects. And so, the five projects are there. And it was really hard coming up with the five projects because the idea was to take these to the voters in a bond measure, and knowing that our citizens only had so much of an appetite, you know, they didn't want to pay too much for this bond measure, and knowing that we had all these different projects that were out there, we decided to really look at the data and look at what the citizens were asking for, and based on that, we came up with these projects. So, the board is over there if you want to look at it afterwards as well, but you see the green rectangles, those are three waterfront park improvements. We're going to get a new beach at Log Boom Park, and then we'll also, right here, is Rhododendron Park, and we're going to, we're going to install a boardwalk from the playfield to the water. We're also going to put a new dock there. And then Squires Landing Park, which is a big park, about 40 acres, we're going to take 11 of those acres and build some new open space and trails and get rid of the invasives and also do some water access facilities there as well. And then the other two projects are sidewalk, bike lane projects, and they're the two big blue lines that you see there. So, this one down here is Juanita Drive from Kirkland all the way to Sammamish River Bridge, and the other one is from Sonomish County down into downtown Kenmore. Why is there this gap right here? Because we either already have sidewalks there or there are sidewalks already funded there. So, in other words, our main north-south arterial, Juanita Drive slash 68, is going to have continuous sidewalks and bike lanes from city limit to city limit. So, it went to the voters last November, and I will just hit the fast-forward button and say that it passed. say that it passed. We needed 60%, and we got 64%. There was a good base of citizens that worked really hard on that. Some of those are here at this table. They worked on their own time, and, not as council members, but they worked as their own time on the campaign, and so it passed. And so we've got just under $20 million worth of projects to build. It's actually going to be a little more than 20 million, because we're leveraging a lot of it with, for grant dollars, so, pretty excited about that. We anticipate building all of these in the early 2020s, so. Yeah, and these, what, I think what's important for the school district, in addition to the park improvements, but a lot of these sidewalks are in close proximity to schools, so. All right, the next, oh yes, I'm sorry, I should--
Where's the boathouse?
Ah, okay.
Baker Boathouse?
No, no, no.
You know, let me go to another map, if I may. See if I have it here. So, here's an aerial photo of a part of Kenmore. So, right--
Can you give the lights a little bit, please?
So, back before Dr. Reed came on scene, we had a much more narrow, limited vision, and we were thinking of just kind of a local, we were thinking of just like a little, a local kind of boutique boathouse club that would be right here on the San Amish River at Rhoda Dendron Park. But if you're talking 200 kids, that's not going to work there, because of the, because of the jam up we'd have with the Lakeside School, which is right here, and also the bridge itself forms a bottleneck. The river is not very wide, and when you have those big eights coming in and making those turns, it takes up the whole width of the river. And if you can imagine all these kids, including Lakeside, all at once coming in and trying to leave and go, it's just not going to work. So we need to look for other sites. One is a private property down here, Ways, that has a mortgage basin, that could be a possibility. But another possibility is Lake Point, and I'm actually going to talk about Lake Point later, but that's this property. This is 45 acres of undeveloped property on Lake Washington, last of its kind. What?
Forty-eight acres.
Forty-eight. It keeps growing. So, anyway, this is privately owned properties, and, but, and there is a developer that wants to redevelop this site, and we could talk to them about partnering, and, because there would be a lot of public access and parks that would be part of this project, so. Yeah. Any other questions on walkways and waterways?
How about the one down by--
Yeah, that first one, the one that's going to be used for the first year or two? Do you want to point that on the map?
So, here is Log Boom Park, and this right here, if you can see the cursor there, that's where we currently have our stand-up paddle, canoe, kayak rentals out of this beach. Just a little further west, there's a little unknown, or very little-known beach right here that's cleaner than this beach is. It doesn't have the grime and the gunk and the debris. And so the Pocock Foundation has identified this spot as the launching site for now, until a boathouse gets built, so.
What's with that open area just a little bit further to the west?
Down here?
Below the-- Yeah, right there.
Yeah, I believe that's a continuation of Log Boom Park, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I think it is part, isn't it?
Yeah.
I was just looking at that for the open area for the launching site.
Yeah. Yep, that's a good spot, too.
Can I ask a question on that, Rob?
Huh?
I mean, I remember watching the crew at U-Dub and everything, but how do you get into these big boats without a tractor? Are they just waiting and out?
Yeah, the beach launch. A number, Bainbridge Island beach launches, South Beach launches, but you do, you put the boat out and you wait out and get in.
So it's just like kayak?
Mm-hmm.
You just go, you go right and get the boat?
It's a little more rugged.
Yeah.
Adds to the sport.
Especially with the outriggers on.
Yeah. Row fast, workups in here.
Yeah. Okay. So the next topic, if I may, Target Zero. So, so the city of Kenmore is on what we call an upward trajectory of becoming. That's what that arrow is. And we believe that in so many ways, we're incrementally improving, whether it's our aesthetics, or our safety, or all these different ways, public access to public facilities. We're just on this continuous upward trajectory of becoming. We do that through continuous improvement and relentless incrementalism. And a key area where we believe we're on this upward trajectory of becoming is pedestrian and bicycle safety. And in 2014, the city council adopted a Target Zero resolution. And the goal of that resolution is that by 2025, or sooner, we want to have zero pedestrian and bicycle fatalities and serious injuries as a result of a collision with an automobile. And so when you're adopting that kind of an aggressive goal, you got to put resources into it, and you got to be serious about it. And so the city council has done just that. They've made it their number-one priority, pedestrian bicycle safety. And we've, we have what we call the three E's when it comes to pedestrian bicycle safety: education, enforcement, engineering. And so the city council's adopted a lot of money towards education, and we've done a lot of outreach, including into the schools. We've taken our little, our booths and our spinning wheel game and everything into the schools. We, there's, I think, National Walk to School Day, where we strategically position our folks at nearest intersections where kids are walking to school, and we've been able to get into various elementary school fairs and things like that. Plus, we've done a lot of advertising and things like that as well. We've also stepped our, stepped up our enforcement, and our police officers are a lot less tolerant of those who are not obeying traffic laws, especially when it comes to pedestrians and cyclists. Instead of issuing warnings, they're issuing tickets. The city council also allocated funds for a police motorcycle, which has a much greater ability to enforce pedestrian bicycle safety laws. And then there's the engineering side of the equation. I'll just go to that. Just in recent years, the city has installed five miles of new sidewalks, including areas like Bothell Way and, and other portions of the city. But I'd like to turn the time over to Chris Overly's, what's that?
To you, fine.
Oh, no, yeah, no, I'd like to turn the rest of this topic over to Chris Overly, our Public Works Director. She can tell you about some upcoming sidewalk projects, especially near schools.
Sure, great, thanks, Rob. Was this your last slide, or did you have anything else?
It's my last one.
Okay, your last one. Okay, well, I'll talk about some sidewalk projects we've been working on. There's a lot up there, so maybe just start at the top and work our way down. We actually have out to add right now for a contractor, a sidewalk up by Kenmore Junior High. It's a Safe Routes to Schools grant. We've been working with the school. We actually had to get data from students before, as part of the application. The teachers helped us and asked the students, "Do you, how do you get to school?" And so what we're hoping for is we build the sidewalk this summer, and then we go back and get more data later. And this is a grant requirement, but we're really trying to see if we put sidewalk in, does that change the mode and how kids get to school? So that will be kind of up around the corner, and then you get to, you turn right up into the school, so it'll be on the south side of 202nd, going up and sidewalk on both sides of the street to get to the junior high. And we have been working really hard to incorporate some element to be fun, have fun, incorporate elements of the school and the mascot. So we're talking about putting some hooves in the ground, and we have a little seating wall, trying to incorporate some of the school colors, so we've been having a lot of fun with that project. But it'll be built this summer, and fingers crossed, it'll be done before school starts. Rob pointed out the walkways and waterways bond measure on 68th, kind of working our way down. I think you've noticed that we've been building sidewalk outside of City Hall on 181st over the past year or so, so we're excited about that. You see the 181st Street TIB urban sidewalks, that's over by the post office. So we just received a grant from the Transportation Improvement Board, and we'll start design on that and go to construction in a couple of years. So that's pretty much from the post office over to 65th on the north side. Let me see, 62nd Avenue, which is the one on the west side, that's another grant that we got, and that's more of a residential street, but we'll be going to construction this summer as well. West A, the project on 522, we're wrapping that up now. Let's see, Rob mentioned walkways and waterways bond measure on Juanita on the south side. So now that we're at the south side of Kenmore, we've got two pending Safe Routes to Schools grants. The one in purple, the 153rd Place, we applied for a Safe Routes to Schools grant this year, and based on, actually, we applied last year, it appears that we've made the cut. The legislature has kind of said, here's where the cut line is for these evaluated programs. So we're feeling pretty confident the legislature will approve the 153rd Place, and that's right from the signal, a couple blocks to the east on the south side. There's sidewalk on the north side already, this would be for the south side. Now, the project that we're working on is the Arrowhead Drive. It's a Safe Routes to Schools program. We're the very first project on the, below the cut line, so the very first contingency project. So we're working to see if we can't get that program expanded a little bit. And this would be kind of on the, the west side of that road, where that orange, kind of around, just to get around that curve is pretty much, we thought, a good size of a project. So kind of from the school, you know, north, and then around the, around the corner there. So we would find out about those this year. They won't go to construction for a couple of years, but hopefully, hopefully those will work out.
Thanks, Chris. Questions?
So I'm--
Smith.
--from the area, and have had kids walking and all around. One of the things that's very interesting is, we live near Arrowhead, and some of the junior high kids will walk to Kenmore Junior High literally almost that entire length if they say, forget, missed the bus, or other things. And then that turn up there at the top near Kenmore Junior High is particularly in need of assistance there. I guess one of the questions I have is for Lockwood Elementary, which I believe is right outside of the city. What is the approach that the city takes for someplace like that? And is that incorporated Bothell? What is the, you're very, the city's very north boundary?
I know it's unincorporated Snohomish County right there, but did you want to?
I was just going to add, you know, whenever we see a grant program, we look at the area and we try to find segments of sidewalks that we think will be competitive. All the sidewalks we have mentioned have been grant-funded, and that is not a location that we've applied for a grant to date.
Right, and so just even the superintendent's, you know, thinking through this, because, you know, there's the, the street, whatever that one is that cuts across, I guess it's Lockwood, you know, and the access for the, for the students on that part, it's just, and there is the, the walkway between Lockwood and Kenmore Junior High, but, but the street access.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. I just wanted to commend the city on the zero policy, a zero target. I think that's inspiring to see city government take such a bold statement and really try and protect citizen safety. And I also think that there's quite a lot of projects to improve the sidewalks in Kenmore, and I think that's really a wonderful thing, so thanks for all your work.
No, thank you. Mr. Carlenzy.
Yeah, and 2016 kind of quietly came and went, and we had zero that year. So we were really happy, and I'm looking for some wood to knock on right now.
But when was, when was it we had the three?
Fifteen.
That was in fifteen?
Fifteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen?
Yeah, we've got two years now.
No, we had one in fifteen.
Fifteen over by--
A cyclist, in October of 2015, a cyclist went off the Burt-Goman Trail--
Over by the cement plant.
--collided with a cement truck. Yeah, so.
Councilmember Herbert?
I would also point out that I think on our list of things we're going to do this, this year is the Tolt River Trail, which will run from 68th over, you know, next to North Shore Utility District, right at Kenmore Elementary. For kids that are living over here, it'll make it a really, a simpler walk over towards the elementary, if they wanted to do that.
And two other things I wanted to add is that we hired, we've recently hired a traffic engineer after 2014, and I know that he's been working very closely with Arrowhead Elementary and the principal and the crossing guards. He's made changes to the traffic signal to change the buffer for the students and pedestrians as they cross the road. So Brett has been working very closely, and I think it's, a lot of good improvements have been made. I know he recently moved the school flashers closer in towards the school, so they're a little more visible. And I also know he's been working with Inglemore High School on the circulation route for dropping off students. So if you've noticed any changes out there, that's a result of Brett and the school's work, and we're doing the best we can to be creative. We made the changes for this year. We'll see how we, how they go, and if we need to tweak it a little more, we can, but that's something we've been focused on as well.
So Mrs. Overly is also our chief engineer, and she's a, and her staff are very prolific grant writers. And they have been very, very successful in bringing money back into the city to allow us to do a number of sidewalk projects and, and road projects, and we certainly appreciate her and her staff, even though I give her grief all the time.
He does.
One thing that should be pointed out is the city now is, what, 17 years old?
Eighteen.
Eighteen years old. When we became a city in 1998, there were virtually no sidewalks in town. It was rural, bedroom community, rural infrastructure, ditches along the side of the roads. And you, it would be nice if we could put sidewalks everywhere all at once, but you can't. It's very expensive, about a million dollars a mile.
Three.
Three million dollars a mile? Okay. So with all the drainage and property acquisition and storm sewers that you got to put in, it is expensive. And so we're whittling away at it, and we're leveraging grant funds as much as we can. And I think we're making great progress, and thanks to Mrs. Overly's here and her team writing those grants. So we've been very successful over the last several years, so, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
All right. While Debbie Bent is coming up to talk about affordable housing, I would like to briefly talk about Mary's Place. And Mary's Place is something we're kind of excited about. And have you, have you heard of Mary's Place? Okay, yeah, it's, it's a really neat model and way of helping almost people. The, the main part of the model is it's helping, it's, it's helping with transitional housing for families with kids. And the mayor and several of my coworkers and I were able to go tour the Mary's Place in North Seattle, and, and were quite blown away with how everything was going there. It's just quite remarkable how all these donations and just really selfless individuals are helping folks. But anyway, so it's looking like it may happen here in Kenmore, where we might get our very own Mary's Place, and I'm trying to find that now. So, so here's Kenmore City Hall right here. So if you go down, head east, here's the, the new fire district headquarters, and here's the old fire district, and right across-- And right across the street is the old Sheriff's Precinct Building and it's been vacant for many years. But it's looking like King County may be able to lease this for like a dollar a year to Mary's Place and might be able to house as many as 70 people here. And they, their average stay is about 80 to 90 days. And we asked Mary's Place when they wanted to move in and they said two months ago. And there are literally kids sleeping outside right now and they could, they could use a home, they could use a shelter now. And so we're doing all we can to expedite this and trying to get them accommodated here in, in the old Sheriff's Precinct Building. It's, it's a building that was built in the seventies, it's about 10,000 square feet and it's, it's got showers and lockers and a kitchen and so a lot of the, you know, main nuts and bolts of the building are there already, so.
And I think the big thing about Mary's Place is it's either a single, it's either a single mom, a single dad, or a couple, but there has to be a child involved. So it is a family shelter and that's one of the attractive things is doing what we can do to get the kids a place to sleep at night. And yeah, I was very impressed with the activities over there when we did the tour, so yes.
Just a quick question. So when do you anticipate children and families will be moving in? Do you have any range?
Is Brian still here? Yes, Brian is working with them on the permitting. The ball's in their court right now to get us some information, but it could be in a couple of months from now.
But I think the key is the kids tend to be going to the schools they were in. They don't come and go to our school. They continue in their own school if at all possible.
So the people that are, would benefit from this are already here in Kenmore?
No.
Probably not. Yeah, a lot of them would come from other places. All right, and if I could have Debbie Bent, our Community Development Director, talk about what we're doing when it comes to other forms of affordable housing.
Thank you. So providing a range of housing choices is important to Kenmore community. And the council said that really providing affordable housing is important and I think we can all sort of recognize the growth going on in the region and rising house prices and trying to provide affordable housing is important for people who want to live here, who want to work here. And so the council directed the Planning Commission to develop an affordable housing strategy. So the Planning Commission have been working towards that end and looking at things that might help incentivize providing new affordable housing or how could you preserve existing affordable housing. And one of the things that we've identified is that there is a significant amount of manufactured housing or in mobile home parks which provides affordable housing. And so that's sort of an issue that was been identified of what do we do with, with that housing? How do you either protect it or if it does redevelop, how do you provide assistance for those people in those homes? So that's one example of a housing strategy. So the council is also looking at ways to provide direct financial assistance for affordable housing. So you're looking at sort of a land use kind of side and a financial side for being able to provide affordable housing or keep existing affordable housing. So this is going to be before the council in March to adopt the housing strategy. And once that's been adopted, then the council will then be taking a look at which strategies to dig deeper into. And then once they've done that, then there'll be, that will be a direction to the Planning Commission to look at the land use side and the council then will be looking at the financial side, which strategies they want to take a look at this year. So this is sort of an ongoing effort for the city is affordable housing and the housing strategy is a key piece of that. Two years ago, another effort that the city adopted was a transit oriented district overlay zone, which is sort of another component that could help provide affordable housing. And it's taking advantage of the accessibility to 522, which is a main transit route and being important to provide housing adjacent to that corridor. And it's voluntary, so a developer could decide to either opt into this approach or not, or just use the underlying zoning structure. If they opt in, there are significant incentives for increasing density if there is more housing affordability provided. So again, the city is sort of taking a look at a range of options and trying to, it's sort of catching up with providing affordable housing, but also trying to think ahead and come up with some new strategies that might help the issue which not only Kenmore, but I think the region is facing in, in providing affordable housing.
So we're seeing more and more high paying jobs come to the Seattle area. And I heard a few weeks ago a saying that I thought really rang true and that it's easier to build a cubicle than it is a house or a place to live. And so you have folks like Amazon that are just hiring and hiring and adding all these high paying jobs and they need a place to live and they're putting more demand on the housing and driving up prices. But you have lots of folks that aren't making tons of money and they need a place to live too. So when the housing prices go up here in the Seattle area, what do they do? Do they live 50 miles out and drive in? Well, then they have transportation costs and so it's a no win situation for folks who aren't making those high salary jobs. So trying to find a way to have that variety of housing that Debbie was talking about is the big challenge for our reason, region. Kenmore, it's going to be hard for Kenmore to single handedly do it by ourselves and it's, is a regional, if not statewide, issue. We are, we do zoom out a little bit beyond ourselves. We're part of a group called an Affordable, what does ARCH stand for?
Affordable Regional Coalition.
Thank you. A Regional Coalition for Housing, ARCH. And it's about a dozen cities here on the east side that have all gotten together to pool our resources to create more affordable housing and advance policies towards that end, so.
Yes, Dave.
Thank you, Mayor Baker. I was just curious if you could help me understand the term affordable housing. Is this something that's set up by the city, by the county? Does it change every year with salaries? Is it just as low, lower than average? How does that kind of address?
There are different definitions of affordable housing and it's usually based on a percentage of medium income. So 80% of King County median income is probably for Kenmore around market rate and anything below that, 50% or 30% is low. So between 30, 50% is considered sort of, you know, very affordable. And so I think the, the challenge usually for affordable housing is providing that housing to serve sort of the, the low affordability range. The 80% is more market rate, anything below that is harder for the market to provide by itself without some incentives, whether that's a land use incentive or a financial incentive.
So I mean, part of it is the jobs that are paying 15 and $20 an hour, those are the ones that need the most help.
Yeah. Can I add something to that?
Yeah.
So.
Arthur Sullivan, who works with the city from ARCH, he, I remember one of the, the stats that he talked about was that as a city, Kenmore for instance, does really well in the kind of general affordable housing area where we do, because we don't, we're in a coalition that includes, you know, Kirkland, Redmond, Bellevue, you know, our affordability is better than a lot of those other cities. But where we were hurting significantly was at the really far end, at the bottom, where there just, there's just a significant need that isn't being addressed. But when you ask that question, what is it for, I actually ask that all the time and we deal with it all the time because it is sort of a moving target and there really isn't a, a defined level of what it is. It kind of seems to vary.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. I'm really pleased to hear the city making progress and I'll try and attend that meeting. One of the things you may not realize in the North Shore School District is we do have a reasonable amount of poverty. And some people say, you know, when you go to our conferences, what's your, you know, the FRL, free and reduced lunch? It's been between 14 and 17%. And some people say, well, that's not very high. And, and I told one of our colleagues, well, just multiply that times our 21,000 students and we would be the 80th largest school district of poor students. We're the same size as the Riverview School District, we're almost 4,000 students who, who, you know, may not have a meal in their belly and that impacts their ability to learn. And we are dedicated as a public education institution to every child. And then we have these achievement gaps oftentimes that, that correlate sadly with certain variables, including whether they're on free and reduced lunch and the district is in a, in a strategic planning process. And we're very dedicated to having that not be a predictor of their outcome. I know, we, we don't want to have the kids who aren't graduating be predicted when they're, they're going to school, an elementary school because they're, they're hungry. And so those, so I'm glad to see that the city is making efforts on that. It's definitely a high priority goal for the school district.
Well, Kenmore Elementary's, I think, got the highest rate of kids on, on free lunch programs.
In the district?
In the, in the district, yes, absolutely. So we're acutely aware of that and that's why the city's been actively involved with the summer program and making sure that the kids have got food during the summer. So, Council, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I, I had trouble with, you know, what is affordable housing and the way it's defined. I finally understood it, that the 80% or 50% of the median income is the income level of the people who can afford a certain amount, a certain level of housing. In other words, how, there's not a definite value or, or number on the cost of that housing, but it is housing that is affordable by people who are earning 50% of the King County median income. So it, it isn't housing that costs half of what the median income is, it's affordable by people who are earning 50%. Am I understanding that right, Debbie?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And I, I didn't grasp that right off the bat. It was confusing to me, as I think I sensed you were confused by it too. So if, if it's 30%, there are individuals in our community that are earning 30% of the King County median income. They can't, they can't spend their whole income on housing. And so that's a pretty small number for the, the cost of their housing. And that's slim pickings around the Seattle, King County area these days.
Okay, next topic, we're on the homestretch. I'll be fast, I promise. Okay, so, so Kenmore grew up for the first 100 years or so of its life as Kenmore, but it was an unincorporated pocket of King County, a rural area, bedroom community. Some people have called us a pass through city, very offensive term if you ask me, but... So when we incorporated, we, we wanted that sense of place. We wanted our own real downtown. We didn't, when we said, hey, let's go downtown, we didn't want to mean Seattle, we wanted downtown Kenmore. So in 2003, the city council adopted a downtown plan that would do just that, give us our own downtown sense of place. And they, they identified four quadrants, but the main bullseye quadrant, what I call the bullseye quadrant, is right here. So here's City Hall and this intersection at 68th and 181st is kind of our bullseye intersection. So about 10 or 15 years ago, the city bought about 10 acres of land right here where you see my cursor. And the city actually assembled all that land and a bunch of it was an old tired 1960s strip mall and a big portion of it was an old vacant King County park and ride. And so the city listed these properties and put them out to market and sold them to developers on conditions of certain redevelopment. And so what you see here is called the Spencer 68 Project and it's about 250 units of residential. And then here's another piece called the Link Building and that's under construction right now. It's actually about 93 units that are being moved into. So in total, we have over 300 brand new units within one block of the bullseye. We were also able to get Kenmore Camera, a regional draw for camera sales to come here. They were just across the street in a smaller building, so they're kind of an anchor to our site. And the city decided to keep, is that really the town green? Oh my goodness, this is a newer aerial photo, wow. The city decided to keep the prime corner and make our own town square right here and we built what they call a hangar building, or what we call a hangar building. Hangar meaning like a airplane hangar, because we are the seaplane capital of the US after all. And so the, the building even has a big door that resembles a hangar. But this is going to be our community living room, a year round space. And we're actually in the Sunday Seattle Times, are, on this very topic. So we're in the business section. So anyway, just, the 2003 plan talked about three civic elements, a new library, a new city hall and a new community center. And that was back in 2003. And we believe those three elements are coming together. We have a new city hall, we have a new library and we have our own version of a community center. So it's kind of exciting and the hope is that it not only will spur this kind of development but that it will also ripple and catalyze other redevelopment in, in our downtown. So it's starting to come and, come together. It's a work in progress. It's still many years of being a work in progress, but it's a downtown that's starting to be something that we can call our own here in Kenmore.
Hot Rocks.
Oh, right. The Hot Rocks. Thank you.
Mayor's working yet?
Kind of.
Where are the four quadrants again?
So the four quadrants, zooming out, this, this, this and this. Okay, yeah. So, okay. And last but not least, speaking of another downtown quadrant, this is the big kahuna. This is the holy grail. This is Lake Point and you've heard me talk about Lake Point, I think, at the last combined meeting that we had. But like I said earlier, this is 45, or I guess the mayor says 48 acres of undeveloped land. There is a developer called Widener Apartment Homes that is in a purchase and sale agreement on this property and they've put significant resources into investigating this property and coming up with different ideas and, and site investigation. And this could be anywhere between 1,200 new multifamily units to 2,000 units. It could also be about a half.
Well, somebody said we could build an elementary at Lake Point.
Oh, an elementary school at Lake Point, cool.
That's a new one.
On the top floor, yeah.
Top teen water tower.
Yeah, and the boathouse.
Boy, that is a new one, that is a new one.
So this developer's pretty darn serious about it. In fact, this week they're having what they call a plusing session. It's a two day visioning session, if you will. And we, based on the resources they've been putting into this, we don't think this developer's going away anytime soon. And this is a really well-funded, well-capitalized developer, so stay tuned for this. Couple of years ago, we set a man on the moon goal for Lake Point. You know, when JFK said, hey, by the end of the sixties, we want to be on the moon. Well, we did a similar thing. We set a goal to be breaking ground for Lake Point in the year 2023 and we think that's doable.
I like 2019 better.
Me too.
All right, that's it. Any questions?
I think everybody's ready to go.
I think everybody's ready to go too. If there is no further business to come before us.
Can I express our appreciation? Can I express our appreciation?
Absolutely, and we appreciate having you here.
No, this, the, the meetings that we've had, I mean, this is the second one I've been able to attend. This is incredibly helpful, just the dialogue, and it's amazing how many little bits of information you can pick up and just the collaborative relationship that we have. We truly appreciate, so thank you for having us, and for dinner, that was truly kind.
And you know, I, I really think that we could benefit from this yearly, because there are things happening, and it's good for all of us to keep these lines of communications open. So I would love to see this being a yearly thing, so. And I will continue to push for that, so. Anyway.
We also want to thank you and Rob for participating in our strategic planning process.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Really appreciate that, on the alignment.
And if you saw my calendar, I have alignment committee, I think, at least two times a month from now until the end of time on my calendar. One day I will figure it out, but I'm reminded about it all the time. Thank you for allowing me to do it. All right, if there's nothing else, we are adjourned.